The Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for July 15, 2019 to order. Would you please call and roll?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any board members have announcements? Mr. Walden.
The first day of school is just one month away. All students must register for school. Registration hubs will be located at Keller Primary School, Peoria High School, Harrison Community Learning Center, and Glen Oak Community Learning Center. Hubs will be open on Thursday, July 25, and Wednesday, August 7, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturday, August 10, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Online registration is now open for students attending the same school and living at the same address. All other students must register at a registration hub. Enrollment information is available now at www.pioriapublicschools.org-enrollment.
Mr. Klaus.
Join the remarkable Peoria Public Schools team. Peoria Public Schools will host a summer job fair Thursday, August 1, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, 1800 Northeast Perry in Peoria. The district needs certified teachers, recent graduates pending certification, substitute teachers, bus drivers, social workers, and more. Certified teachers and recent graduates pending certification can also register online to participate in a virtual job fair to be held Thursday, July 25, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Go to pioriapublicschools.org/employment for a list of all openings, bring your resume, transcripts, and letters of recommendation. Certified staff should also bring a sample lesson plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Ross.
Stuff a bus with school supplies. Advanced Medical Partners, Northwoods Mall and Peoria Walmart stores are joining forces to stuff a school bus with school supplies for Peoria Public School students. Please consider donating by leaving school supplies at the bins, at the Walmart stores on North University or Allen Road, or the Center Court at Northwoods Mall. School supply donation bins will be in place until August 13. And they have another one. Bratz and Brew at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. Get your tickets to Bratz and Brew, Peoria Public Schools Foundation Uniform Fundraiser, fundraising event for 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, August 23, at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. To order tickets, go to www.ppsfoundation.org.
Thank you. Dr. Davidson Abiles.
Bienvenidos, buenos tardes. Welcome, everyone. Good afternoon. Primer dia de escuela, first day of school. Un recordatorio para familias. El primer día de clases será el miércoles 14 de agosto. Habrá una hora de salida temprana del 14 de agosto al 30 de agosto. Reminder to families, the first day of school will be Wednesday, August 14. There will be a one-hour early dismissal from August 14 through August 30.
And I have two. So Backpack Peoria, make plans to attend Backpack Peoria from 9:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday, July 27, at the Dream Center, which is located at 714 Hamilton Boulevard. Come meet your principal and pick up a backpack with school supplies. Face painters, craft tables, and free lunch will be served. First 750 students will also receive a $10 Sam Harris voucher for a school uniform. Students can pick up a free book to keep up with their summer reading schedule. PPS staff will be available to help register students. Healthcare professionals will also be available for physicals and dental screenings. However, they will not be offering immunizations. And the next one is first-day compliance for health requirements and immunizations. Make sure your students return to school healthy in August. Harrison Community Learning Center and Peoria High School will have nurses available during the registration hub days. Heartland Health Clinic will hold walk-in hours for school physicals and vaccinations beginning July 22. Heartland is at 1701 West Garden Street is open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Heartland at 2321 North Wisconsin Avenue is open Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. For more information, call 309-680-7600. To make an appointment at the Unity Point In-School Health Clinic at Manuel or Treewind, call 309-671-0550. Unity Point In-School Clinics will be opening, will be open beginning August 7. All students must be in compliance with the, on the first day of school, which is Wednesday, August 14. Thank you. And next, we have District Presentations. First, excuse me, community contribution is first. Dr. Ann Bond.
My name is Ann Bond, and I'm here to introduce someone really special to you. And there are a couple people from Franklin here, so I'd like them to join us as well, please. Thank you. Do you want to say? So this is Officer Aguilar. He is a resident officer in Franklin's neighborhood. And so I just want to share a little bit about him with you. Four years ago, I met Officer Aguilar. He had moved into the Franklin neighborhood as a resident officer and came by to introduce himself and get to know him. And immediately, he became part of the Franklin family. He was there for our staff and our families, and most importantly, our children. He really goes above and beyond, and of course, doing what we all think our police officers should do, which is keeping us safe. He was always there in the blink of an eye whenever there was anything even remotely concerning or whatever, he was always there. He even called me over break and said, "So, you know, is this a bad woman or all in the area?" And that kind of thing, always keeping us abreast of that. If he wasn't on duty, but he had heard that something was even remotely in the general area, he'd contact me, be like, "Everything okay? Everybody okay?" I mean, he was always doing that. In addition to that piece, which of course is so important with keeping us safe, he helped us in so many other ways as well. So he, I mean, where do I start, right? He has collaborated with us and put on an annual jamboree at Franklin, where it's just grown to over 500 people attend this, where it's community events and all sorts of resources there for our families. He's been so integral in making sure that that has happened in terms of attendance. He helps us with attendance. He comes monthly and plays basketball, or just hangs out with the kids who have had birthday attendance for that month. He comes to our winter concerts and stands behind stage and cheers our kids on. He comes to our award-winning child. Yeah? He comes to our... Okay, yeah. Yeah?
That's way too...
So, he comes to our award assemblies, and he gives out awards to the kids, and they just love getting those from him. He goes on the Because We Care Walks with Franklin and goes door to door, and talks with families about the importance of being at school. He just really is a part of the Franklin family. They're so really blessed to have him with us. He's a really good role model for all of us in terms of remembering what it means to really serve others. He is like the poster child for that. So I just want to acknowledge you and recognize you in front of the board and everybody here and anyone who's watching or listening, because you have done so much for us. And we are really truly, truly appreciative. So please, help me.
I've got not too many words, but basically, it's been an honor to not just be a resident officer, but the experience with Franklin, the staff took me in. There was no awkward, no animus, nothing. It was just walking aboard, here's the kid, you know, whatever you want to do with the kids. You know, as far as programs, ideas, anything, we're open to collaborate with you. And it's been amazing. Jamboree events were amazing. You know, having all these kids climbing my squad ladder, played my life. Go on, our eardrums, we're signing, but to me, it was a big deal because it just makes me face time with these kids, let them know that it's my neighborhood, it's my school, they can trust me. But for that, to real read and everything that the school has provided for that little piece of neighborhood is amazing. And so to be part of that, to me, it was not like doing a job, kind of just having fun, honestly. Especially, you know, what I do is a lot of aspects that aren't fun, they're fun to be a police officer, but the kids make it fun, and that's probably my favorite part of being a resident officer. I mean, a lot of the work maybe is something that I did, I think, for the effort. It is, it's fun, so thank you.
Comments? So, did you bring any other family, any other family members with you?
No, my wife has to work.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer.
Okay, we are at District Presentations, and the first presentation is Ms. Krista Talbert from Children's Home.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see everyone again in the evening. So Children's Home Services, we provide mental health services to children and their families. Oh, yeah, usually I'm putting that, but I will lean into the mic.
How about now? Okay, okay. I could have used my old teacher voice, but that's okay. So we provide mental health services to children and families throughout seven schools within the district. So I'm just gonna slide on down. So our goal is to provide services to Tier 3 students. However, we do work with students across all three tiers. As you know, as students grow and change, their tiers also change. And sometimes tiers are not fully reflective of a mental health concern. Some mental health concerns don't appear like behavioral disruptions in school, so students that might be struggling with depression, that might not look like something you can see on the outside, but they might be more comfortable sharing that with one of our counselors. So I'm gonna slide down. All right, so through our services this year, we were able to serve over five, we were able to serve 564 students. Our largest program was at Von Steuben this year, serving 156 students. All right, a closer look at what we've accomplished for the year. So 49 students at the end of the school year were still in services and will receive mental health services throughout the summer. That looks like services that take place in their homes, in the community, wherever the student and the family is the most comfortable. Thirty-eight percent of the referrals received by our therapists were made by the child presenting themselves, asking for a counselor, or by a caregiver reaching out and specifically asking for mental health services for their child. On average, we see students for approximately five months, so our services really span the majority of the school year. And 42% of services were provided to 5th and 6th graders. Seventy-six percent of the interventions we provided resulted in student growth, with therapists monitoring and tracking student growth at the end of each interaction with the child. And 33% of the students we served received IEP services throughout the district. So some of the challenges students are facing. Overall, the top challenge that students report, or that a parent or caregiver reports, is some sort of struggle within the home or with a family issue. And that struggle translates to challenges in the classroom or in the learning environment. They also present with disruptive classroom behavior. That looks like a variety of different things, an inability to pay attention, walking out of the classroom, so many different things. We also intentionally set goals with our students and work to better understand their needs through collaboration with teachers, caregivers, and any other stakeholders. So that's therapeutic service planning. And students also reported a high volume of peer conflict or harassment. They're having real challenges working with problem-solution-focused thinking, resolving conflicts with their peers. And then we do break it down per individual school, so those schools can see unique trends with their student population. So in response to those presenting problems, which are measured at each interaction with every student, we provide a variety of services to meet their need. Our top service was skill development and support, so really working with students to better understand how can we cope with the emotion you're struggling with? How can we resolve this conflict with a peer, with a teacher? Giving them those skills so they can continue to be successful. Twenty-seven percent of the time, it's individual or family therapy, processing those challenging emotions, the traumas they've experienced, and what that looks like in the school environment. Sixteen percent professional collaboration, working with all the stakeholders within the school. And then again, service planning, because we are conscientious of assessing a student and family's needs, as well as setting goals for them collaboratively with them. So this is a little bit big, but I can zoom out. So we also take a close look at what those services look like across tier levels. You do see some movement with more intensive therapeutic services happening at higher tier levels, as well as more crisis and de-escalation services for students that are experiencing a psychiatric crisis that might need very intense supports. So student growth. We utilize the Ohio scale to measure a student's problem scale, how the child is internalizing or externalizing their challenges in life. So are they feeling anxious? Are they having thoughts of worthlessness? Are they getting into altercations with others, having a hard time following the rules? So 73% of the students that we worked with for a prolonged period of time were able to decrease their reported problem scores. Our Ohio assessment is done collaboratively with the child, with teachers, with other important caretakers in their lives, as well as families. We also really look at how well they're functioning in their world, looking to find those strengths, things that they can improve upon, social relationships, getting along with others, getting along in their households, talents, hobbies, interests. And 71% of students improved their overall functioning. And then we do break those down, so you can see really pockets of strength in schools like Lincoln and schools that are still working really, really hard for student growth as well. So we're conscientious of there are certain goals and benchmarks that many students and adults want to see in the school environment. So we closely examined and look at how we were able to work with students and develop skills to help them follow the rules within the school environment. So 47% of students that faced challenges following the rules or the law improved. Forty-three percent of students improved their ability to think clearly and make good decisions, which has a wonderful impact on the learning environment and their ability to cope with stressors. Ninety-two percent of the students we worked with remained in their initial school placement, so without expulsion or leaving the alternative school. Seventeen percent decreased the numbers of days suspended. Those were students that we were able to see their previous year's numbers. That's not always possible in every situation for, like, 5th graders transitioning into middle school. And 29% of students did not have any suspensions this year. We're very conscientious of that students are not able to grow and succeed in this world without their families and their caregivers and their neighborhoods. So we work very hard to incorporate the home life, parents, aunts, uncles, neighbors, everyone that's invested in this child. So 63% of students had a family member or caregiver involved in their treatment. What this looks like is whatever the parent is wanting and willing to engage in, all the way through family therapy taking place in the home, to regular phone calls and check-ins and supports at important student meetings, like IEP meetings, 504s, or community-based meetings with probation or other partners. Eighty-one percent of students that we worked with and their caregivers were linked to additional community resources where they found they had a need. We also specifically monitor crisis de-escalation. Crisis is very challenging for youth in school. Schools can become very overwhelming, and it can be a very intense environment to have a mental health crisis. So of those students that did experience a crisis through the supports with their school-based counselor, 26% had a crisis. Of those students that identified mental health crises as something that happens in school that is challenging for them, 17% were able to decrease the frequency and intensity of these crises. And for programs like TTP, this is immense growth. It's something that we're very proud of, these students who are working so hard on this year. This year again, we surveyed students to understand some of those challenges that they've experienced in life and what they're bringing to school with them every day. So we asked students to complete, and with their caregiver if they need it, an adverse experiences survey. These are things that they report having happened to them in their lives that can adversely affect their functioning. So the top reported challenge by students was surviving bullying. Students are having a very hard time with peer conflict, and a very hard time communicating and resolving conflict effectively with one another. Students also report parent and guardian separation or divorce is very challenging for them, hearing and seeing violence in their home neighborhoods or in their school neighborhoods, losing a close relationship within the last year, as well as living in a household where someone has turned, served time in jail or prison, so living away from a caregiver. These experiences often shape the way children see the world and their interactions with adults, so they're very important for us to better understand, so we can help work effectively with them and provide them the support that they need. Sadly, some students have experienced one adverse event, and many have experienced multiple adverse events. So we do also look at the number. So this year, 99% of students reported one potentially adverse event, all the way up to 28% of students reporting seven or more of these events. These potentially adverse events do directly correlate with potentially requiring some mental health support, so it does correspond with their engagement in services and their desire to seek services. It's a positive step. That's all I've prepared for today. Were there any questions or things that you wanted me to go back to?
Mr. Walden.
Yeah, it was one of your earlier slides.
Sure.
You had a, of the eight schools you identified, you had Von Steuben with 156 students, I believe, contacted. And yet, Lincoln and Glen Oak, which have a much larger student personnel, were significantly less. Is there an explanation for the difference within those schools?
Absolutely. Like you said, Lincoln and Glen Oak have a larger student population. They also have other additional student support members, so those schools are so lucky to have in-school social workers, as well as school counselors. Von Steuben wasn't able to have a school counselor this year, throughout the entire year, so our person, our therapist there did see more students, simply just because of staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Ross.
You had a total number of 564.
Mm-hmm.
Is that an unduplicated number, or are those repeat cases?
Unduplicated.
Total, unduplicated?
Total, unduplicated numbers.
Okay. And how long would you say that each one of these individuals received? What is the average amount of time spent with them?
Approximately five months.
Each, per person, I mean? An hour a day, or a month, or 30 minutes, or?
Oh, I wouldn't want to approximate that without double-checking the numbers, because student crises can last several hours, and some students need a 15-minute rhythmic intervention to regulate and get back into the classroom, so I would love to look that number up and share it with you, if that would be possible.
And then, that was an acronym, did you say DPP?
TTP, Treewind Therapeutic.
Oh, I thought you said DPP. I was thinking it was Treewind. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Walden.
Yeah, maybe outside of bounds of what you presented here. I had understood that your faculty and staff were in the process of organizing or unionizing. Have you guys taken a position opposed to that, or in favor of it, or neutral?
That is outside of my bounds. With my roles in the agency, that's not something that I contribute to or am in conversation about.
Who would be the person to answer that?
Matt George.
I would say our CEO, Matt George.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next presentation is Mr. Carl Cannon with Elite.
Good evening. Being technically incapable, I won't touch that thing, so Sherry, you have control. If we go too fast, or you need us to stop and answer a question, please, not a problem. Elite is currently in two buildings, Sterling and Lincoln K8. We serve approximately 1,176 students, and we do have the demographics for the buildings in front of you. Our primary mission with Elite is to control behavior so that American heroes, our refer them, teachers as American heroes, can teach. On these charts, you will see where behavior is trending in the right direction, in both buildings. That's Sterling, top four referral areas. And below that would be Lincoln's, top four referral areas. Comparison, in the next chart, will show you 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, and the reduction in each building, next slide, please, of the major referrals. How we get there? We do a variety of different contacts from home visits... We do a variety of different contacts, from home visits, next slide, please, check-in, check-outs, crisis de-escalation, social skill development in both buildings. You can see a description of how we define our approach in each of these areas. The net results, you saw the overall, but by tier, you will note, observing tier-one services, the number of interventions that we provided throughout the entire calendar Moving past tier-one, before you go, that is where the majority of our work is done, so the theory being those not in the mix for negative behavior, to keep them out of the mix while reducing those in to bring them back towards tier-one. Here's a snapshot of tier-two. We did have progress in moving students from tier-two to tier-one. And the services that helped us do that. Tier-three. I think there's two of us that are technically deficient. Okay, okay, now she's gonna get, never mind. Got it? Okay, ma'am. So, tier-three to tier-two, progress. How we did it? The services, right there. And again, if I'm, if we're moving too fast, please, stop us. Services. There you go. The next piece would talk about the added value, and I won't go through the list, but I think an item that's significant, forty of our high school seniors received two hundred and fifty-dollar scholarships for participating in Elite and the Bradley-sponsored I-CAT Overall, caseload students, that's tier-two and tier-three. At Lincoln, back up. At Lincoln, we had fifty total students, thirty-seven had improvement. At Sterling, twenty-one total students, sixteen improved. Out-of-school suspensions, you can see the reduction from seventeen eighteen to eighteen And we did do student surveys, the middle school students. I have the results within your packet. We also conducted a staff survey at Lincoln, and those results are also in your packet. And we surveyed number of parents. Those results are also in your packet. And finally, I'd like to share a deep concern that I know our district has, that we are acting on as we speak, is a program called Getting Out, Giving Back. We've identified students who would probably, who would be tier-three students who have a profile that would be similar to those involved in gang activity. Located in the audience, behind me, our gentleman, who are supporting our efforts to take this bank of students over the summer months to get them ready for school in the fall. We program these students three days a week. Mondays would be life skills, Wednesdays would be service, community service, and Friday would be fun activity. They earn the right to Fridays. The life skills include conflict resolution, anger management. We are implementing a program that's nationally renowned called Gang-Free Life. I'm encouraged by where we are so far. The goal is to get them back to a building in the fall, on August fourteenth, but not to leave them there. So, we've created a relationship with our participants, our mentors and recruiters, that will give the teachers, our teachers, a place to call should mom not be able to help, should grandma or the parent not be able to help. We feel like these men in our kids' lives will help them trend, bridge back in the right direction. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from board members? I do have a question. How many students are in this summer program?
Seventeen at this time.
I think, other questions?
I just have one. Of that seventeen, how many of those are current students or dropout that are going to be coming back to us, or?
Every student that we have currently is scheduled to come back.
They've already, they're already students in?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wall? What was the grade level of those seventeen?
We have the age range from twelve to sixteen. All boys.
Okay. I have a second question. When you did the surveys, you had two hundred and eighteen responses from the students. Was that two hundred and eighteen out of eleven hundred students that were?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We, really, that number is a little skewed because we only did middle school surveys. So, we didn't, at Lincoln, surveyed K-four.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments?
Just one other quick one. Are you also located at Quest? I know that doesn't deal with the purity part, but?
Yes, yes, we do have a team at both the middle school and the high school.
Okay.
No other questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I could introduce the team that's supporting our students real quick?
Please.
I'll do that quickly. Mentors, please. That would, mentors, please. Okay, that's Mr. Timothy Wade, thank you, and Mr. Stuckey. Okay, recruiters. And that is Mr. Woods and Mr. Dee, we call. And our program coordinator is Mr. Hicks. Thank you.
Our next presenter is Mr. Ron Tyler with Family Core.
Well, good evening. I'm Ron Tyler. This is Sam Duran, he's an outreach supervisor. So, this year, we served over thirty-one hundred and seventy-one kids at fourteen different schools. Go ahead and go down. Can you use? There we go, we got the mouse. These are the schools that we're at and the number of kids that were served at each school. These are the top four presenting issues for all of the schools, so that the data is aggregated. Underneath will be individual, disrupting class, attendance, academic performance, and stress. Those are the top four issues. Significant portion of our attendance interventions occur at Manuel High School. Stan Hangan is there and he does a great job at that. Underneath is all the different schools, the top four presenting issues at every school. Just keep scrolling. Here are the top four services that we provided, check-in, check-out, group social skills, attendance intervention, and crisis intervention. Those are the top four. And those are the ones broke out by each school. So, we serve tier-one, two, and three, but the majority of them are tier-one. Over twenty-nine hundred students are in the tier-one group. We do a lot of things like group and individual social skills with them, but we do more global classroom-wide interventions. We do a little crisis intervention with those kids, too, as well. We do home visits. We do basically anything it takes to help this kid and family in school succeed. Then we broke it down, so these numbers include, these are unduplicated. We served one hundred and sixty-nine kids in the tier-two, and we provided check-in, check-out, individualized, group social skills. We did a lot of parent interaction, but let's go to the top tier. Four services provided, group social skills, crisis intervention, check-in, check-out, and individual social skills. The outcomes that we measured, and we measured these for tier-two and three, we established individualized goals with these kids. Eighty percent of them met their goals that were developed. Seventy-seven percent of the kids that we served that were tier-two attended ninety percent or better in terms of attendance rate. Seventy-seven percent of the kids reduced discipline referrals. A hundred percent of the kids were promoted to the next grade level. Seventy-two percent of the students showed improvement in global functioning, basically relationships, activities, outside activities, how well they are communicating with their parents, their peers, their teachers. This year, we introduced the parent Columbia scale, which was interesting. So, we have the student Columbia scale, and this year, we introduced Columbia, and sixty-eight percent of the parents who completed that tool stated that their child improved. And so, we're encouraged by that, and we're gonna continue to use that. Eighty-four percent of our kids in tier-two showed knowledge gain and one or more SEL competencies. Tier-three kids, we had ninety-nine, and of course, these are more intense. The top four were group social skills, attendance, crisis intervention, and individual social skills. Again, we're measuring the ABCs, attendance, behavior, course completion. A hundred percent of the kids were promoted. Seventy-seven percent of the kids reduced their discipline referrals. Again, the parents were part of that. Sixty-eight percent showed that their child improved, and eighty-four percent showed knowledge gain and one or more SEL competencies. We did ninety percent, six percent of all crisis was resolved with the child staying in the school. That's a pretty good rate. We had over sixty-eight hundred, or we did have sixty-eight hundred family contacts that were completed this year. And then, we did a survey, so if we can move to the survey. Teacher survey, maybe? There we go. So, we had two hundred and thirty-nine teachers that responded, and these are the question, but generally, everything is ninety percent or more in terms of satisfied or highly satisfied. Overall, they're just, you know, again, over ninety-two percent were very satisfied with our services, so that's, look at that. Let's go to the student survey. We asked them to rate us A, B, C, D, and F. Yes, we got a couple Ds and Fs, but again, the counselor listens to them, the counselor is kind to them, it's ninety-eight percent or more. Ninety-seven percent or more, my counselor has taught me new skills that have helped me be more successful. We're looking at over ninety-three percent of the kids are reporting that, too, as well. Over eighty-eight percent is saying, yeah, my attitude's a little better. I appreciate the honesty there. And over ninety-two percent say, hey, overall, I really enjoy this. So, one hundred and twenty-nine students responded. Let's go to the parent survey. And this is one of the questions on the survey that we asked the parents. We had fifty-eight parents responded, and essentially, we have ninety-eight point two six percent said that our services helped improve their child's ability to be able to handle conflict, stress, worries, anger, and sadness. Pretty powerful overall. So, do you have any questions?
Mr. Wall?
Just, got a couple here. On the survey?
Yeah.
You indicated you had one hundred and twenty-nine students respond?
Right.
Was that out of the thirty-one seventy-one?
Yes.
Okay. And the two hundred and thirty-nine teachers, was that, do you have the total of the teachers that were involved?
I do, I do not know. I do know this, it's unique, and the way that I deliver it is I send the link to the principal and they send it to every?
Their staff.
Their staff. So, I don't know how many they send it to, but I think the important part of that is that we're not trying to skew the data by only sending it to teachers who have used us. I mean, so it's open to even those teachers who have not used us.
Okay. Second thing, what are the academic credentials of your staff?
So, I have, I have a few masters, three master's degrees, one LCSW, one MSW, and one MS in psychology, and then, the rest of them are undergraduate BS, BA.
Okay. What's the total number of staff that you have servicing, period?
So, thirteen point five.
Okay.
Ms. Ross?
Just a quick question. Thirty-one seventy-one was the total served, and you had sixty-eight hundred contacts that meant?
Parent contacts.
Parent contacts. So, you've had to call parents more than once.
Oh, sure. And sometimes, that will reflect calling one parent multiple, like ten, twelve times. It's not, you know, and we do a lot of that.
Make contact, or you just keep calling until you make contact?
Oh, yeah, well, there's letters, there's email, there's phone, there's, you know, knock it on your door.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at audience presentations. Comments are limited to five minutes, and we just ask that you make the comments respectful. There's also a suggestion box in the corner, and board members are also available for contact directly on the district website. The first, first person is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
District one fifty needs to have some serious conversations as to what students need from kindergarten through high school to be appropriately educated and how that education should be achieved. There is much talk today about how the old-fashioned way of teaching and learning is inappropriate. Before that topic can be approached, we need to decide what needs to be learned. Certainly, I believe the idea of personalized learning is wrong. Building a vocabulary is the most important root to an education. At the primary level, students should be taught at least the vocabulary needed to understand each of the subjects taught. Memorization is frequently frowned on as lower-level thinking. Instead of just a list of words and their definitions, at least one example of each vocabulary word used in a sentence should be given. Words need to be part of our speaking and writing vocabulary, not just the words we recognize. Therefore, words must be taught in context, adding, add spelling to the pronunciation and pronunciation. I believe that age appropriate... I believe that age-appropriate classic literature should be required in guided reading as soon as possible. I fear that much of literature has been cast aside as irrelevant and uninteresting to today's students. Hogwash. Literature of the past teaches history as well as how to read and to write well-constructed sentences. I taught Anglo-Saxon history with Beowulf and the once and future king, and the Middle Ages with Canterbury Tales. I tried to make the history relevant because history, all history is relevant, and a significant number of students liked the old literature. Subject matter teachers at each grade level must teach the vocabulary needed to understand each subject. Think back. Who taught you the vocabulary and the rules of grammar, math, algebra, biology, chemistry, botany, history, government, civics, social studies, and geography, and on and on? Who made you learn the parts of speech, the states and their capitals, and on and on? Teachers provided ways to help you memorize the basics to store in your brains forever. Don't take that away from students. Computer learning cannot possibly provide the laughter and conversation encouraged by teachers during discussion times when students learn from their teachers and each other. The recent $100,000 winner of Jeopardy's Teen Tournament was asked why he memorizes so many facts. He responded, "Facts are the building blocks of all opinions and beliefs. Why shouldn't we prepare our students to enter the world with facts to back their opinions and ideas?" Jeopardy chooses adults and teenage participants from a very diverse population. I could guarantee that the teenagers in the recent tournaments learned from teachers, not computers, and no computer programs such as Summit are part of their learning experience. Why cheat our students? I realize that vocabulary isn't all that must be taught, but it's probably half of what our students need to learn to be prepared for almost any job or college. So far, there is no solid proof that all the expensive programs, computer programs of the past 10 years have improved student learning in District 150. Centuries of successful people have been educated by these old methods. The brain hasn't changed. The scientists, not educationists, are learning more and more about how the brain works. And you can use the computer along with the old methods too, of course. One question. What is the new way to store words in the brain to be used for thinking, speaking, and writing? I'd like to hear an answer for that. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Terry Knapp.
Yes, yes. This week, or last week, actually, I was approached by some parents from Quest, a few parents from Quest, and they had some questions. And I suggested that they take those to the board at Quest and not necessarily bring them here because I've gotten the opinion just coming to these meetings that you don't have anything to do with Quest, that the Quest Board runs Quest. So I told them to go to Quest with their, with their questions, but I would pose them to you and see if these sound proper to you. They said that either the number is 24 or 26 students at Quest were asked to not come to school the last two weeks of the school year. Not suspended, not expelled, but told not to come to school for the last two weeks of the school year. That's outrageous. You know, I know you don't care because you're not running the school, but I think you should be informed. The second thing, I was at the basketball camp at Bradley Team Camp, and I ran into a couple of parents there, and they were upset that last year their kids got to participate in the Bradley Team Camp, but this year it happened to be on the last day of school. And even though Bradley makes accommodations, for example, the last day of school is usually a half a day, they could have played in the afternoon and evening at Bradley. Instead, they were not allowed to go to Bradley because it was the last day of school at Quest. You know what, two weeks after your school year was over? I don't know what the coincidence between those dates were, but I think that those kids should have been allowed to go. That was a local thing. The Bradley staff was there. These young people looked forward to doing that, and they simply were told they couldn't go. Not good enough, as far as I'm concerned. Carrying on, I want to reflect back to 10 years ago when Woodruff was closed in 2010, actually nine years ago, I guess, if my math serves me. If you remember, nobody went to the North Side or the East Bluff to talk with parents about closing the school. The new board member that got on, similar to we have a new board member now, was quizzed by 100 people one night, and she promised not to vote to close a high school. She promised not to close a high school. She was the fourth vote that closed Woodruff High School. At that time, we had a discussion, I had a discussion here at this podium, about gangs in Peoria and crossing gang lines, and said that there were gangs in Taft Homes, there were gangs in River West, which used to be Warner Homes, and there were gangs in Harrison Homes. And if anybody has been alive in this city, they understand that. But one of the board members said we didn't even have gangs in Peoria at that particular time. Now we're faced with a problem in the East Bluff in particular, and I know that Dr. Karat has done more with this than Dr. Lathan ever did. Dr. Lathan didn't even go to the East Bluff. She didn't even go to the North Side and talk to the people before they closed Woodruff High School. I know personally that Dr. Karat has already met with people at the St. Bernard's new facility over there that they're using for intervention in the East Bluff. I know she talked to Mr. Combs over there who lives in that neighborhood. He's 80 years old and graduated from Woodruff back in 55 or 56. I had an hour conversation with him. They're very concerned about the East Side. He lives one door from one shooting and three doors from another shooting. And he claims that it's not the people in the East Bluff. It's the transients that come through selling drugs. It's the gangs that are doing this, not the people in the neighborhoods. They're just innocent victims. And I know, Dr. Karat, you've talked with them, and they're very appreciative of that. Mr. Cunningham is a retiree from Caterpillar. I think you talked to Mr. Cunningham, did you not? And Mr. Cunningham is a, if I can use the word mucky-muck, at Caterpillar. I mean, he is busting his backside to put this thing together at St. Bernard's. I talked with him today for 45 minutes. Tremendous individual. You know, traveled the world with Caterpillar, closing plants, closed a plant in England. He's not chump change, is what I'm saying. And he's a great man, and he really appreciates Dr. Karat's input and her concern for the East Bluff and her concern for the North Side. And she's trying to do her job, but you need to know that they need support in the East Bluff. These people are actually bleeding. When you got a 14-year-old shooting a 16-year-old, you have problems. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Glenn Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Superintendent Dr. Karat, my name is Glenn Ross, and I'm here today to introduce myself as President of the Quest Charter Academy Board of Directors. I know many of you, but I wanted to address you all as the Board of Directors of the Peoria Public Schools. And I am excited by our team approach to education, to the education of our wonderful students to date. And I look forward to working with you through our ongoing recharter process. At the board level, I understand that you may only hear bits and pieces about Quest or our recharter process. Please know that we are committed to transparency and our team approach with you. We will be proactive in keeping you in the loop to the recharter process as well as Quest successes and difficulties. I am looking forward to working with you through the recharter process because I believe we share a common goal. I think that we all want to bring quality education to every child in Peoria so that we can prepare them for a career, add value to their lives, build them up to be good citizens, and ultimately improve our community. And like you, we know that customized education is important to bring out the best in each student. And within Peoria Public Schools, there are many great opportunities and great options. At Quest, whether through our STEAM focus, online education, or other programs, our other programs having served our students as yet, another choice for education and reaching kids to cater to their individual learning needs. In my role as a board chair, I have the privilege of interacting with our Quest students, faculty, staff, and alumni. It is truly my most rewarding, the most rewarding part of what I do as a board member. I have witnessed firsthand the programs, our programs, our preparation of our student for success. And I'm sure that you feel the same pride that I do when you see the kids graduate and move on to their next chapter of their lives. But let's be honest, not every single child does succeed. And that means that your work and my work is never done. Together, we can keep improving and reaching every child to make sure that all have a chance to succeed and to be successful in their future. And the exciting part for us at Quest is that we are just getting started. It has only been three short years since our first senior class graduated. We are all, we all know, real change doesn't happen overnight. It takes time and persistence. And we think it takes collaboration and community as well. So we are excited to collaborate with Peoria Public Schools through the rechartering process and beyond. And we believe that together, along with our community partners, we can continue to bring superior educational choice to our community. To ensure that you remain well-informed, we will regularly attend your meetings to keep you appraised, apprised of the, and to address any questions or concerns that you may have along the way. We would welcome making this process more formal if you would like to include the Quest, Quest as a regular part or agenda item on your, on your meeting, meeting agenda. Of course, if you prefer, we will be happy to continue providing you updates during the public comment sessions of their, of your, of your meetings. Again, I want to thank you all for what you do and for all that you do for our students here in the Peoria, Peoria District. Thank you for your time.
Next, Mrs. Ernestine Jackson.
Good evening. I'm Ernestine Jackson. I live 1123 West Teton Drive. I'd planned to go over some things that I was concerned about the last meeting, but got hung up on a vacation that took me a long time to get back. So I'd like to cover those things now because there are some issues that, that I have, and it really resolves around discipline that I want to bring before you so that we can talk about considering making some changes to make sure that our children are doing the right things, taking responsibility for their actions, and giving a teacher an opportunity to teach children that are in school on time and what to do. One of the things that I've talked to several of you, and I also talked to Dr. Karat about is, one of the things that bothered me is that big foyer at Manuel High School. And I know that when they built that, it was gorgeous, but now it kind of houses kids at the end of the day. I had gone in there several times, and there's always eight to 10 kids in that hallway as you come in the front door. A staff is sitting over at the side, and she's saying, "Come get your, your permit to get into your last hour class." And I heard that, and I thought, why are students late for the last hour class? And why are they gathered in this hallway playing around? Not only that, a staff sitting there in that little cubicle by herself, it's not, in my mind, it's not a safe place to be. At the time I've been there, there were picnic tables, like round tables where kids sit in that foyer, and I hope that those are moved. I walked up to a group of kids and said, "Why are you late for the last hour class? You've been at school all day." And they were laughing. And I asked the staff person, and she said, "They're always late." That should never happen. I know there are issues and concerns at Manuel High School. I do know that we have changed principals down there three times since I've been here. At some point, we need to deal with that whole issue of discipline at Manuel High School. I'm hoping that my bringing this to you, that you will take a look at how you deal with that whole issue of kids being late, and they've been in school all day for a last hour class. That doesn't seem right to me. So I would like to bring that to your attention. It creates lots of discipline problems, and it's an unsafe environment for that staff person that's sitting in that cubicle directing a group of kids, sitting on those benches in that big foyer. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, so goes our school, so goes our community. So goes our community, so goes our school. I believe that this board needs to start working very closely with the council in this city. I think a lot of things that happen with our kids can be resolved by working very closely with our council. The council has to understand that they're responsible for some of the things that happens to our kids because they have to be more intentional about how they treat certain areas in our school, in our school district. I think that board needs to be very intentional about wanting to deal with discipline, deal with parents, to begin to hold, not only, we want to always say, "Let's hold the teachers accountable, let's hold parents accountable, and let's hold children accountable." In order to do that, you're going to need the help of the city council in order to do that. So I'm hoping that there will become a real collaboration between this board and the city council. The other thing is, if you realize that this board represent three people in District Three, three people in District Two, and one in District One. If I can finish this.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like for you to really consider adding or looking at how you begin to add additional people in District One. I think that's a disservice to our children in District One, that you only have one person that has to take all of the issues and concerns in District One. So I am asking you to begin to meet with the council, meet with the community, and start talking about how do we go about adding additional people in District One. I think it's unfair for the other two districts to have three board members representing that area and only one in District One. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Karen Gass. Next, Ms. Karen Gass.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here on behalf of K-2 Benefits and the Insurance Committee in support of Consent Agenda Item Number 16. And since I am here tonight, and I wasn't able to at the last meeting, I wanted to just make sure that I publicly acknowledge and thank some of the people that I work with on a regular basis. And the people I work with at the administration building most frequently are Jerry Hammer, Mick Willis, and Andrea Cooper Schmidt. Going to acknowledge all of them real quickly, but Jerry and Mick, nights, weekends, they can be on vacation. If something needs to get done, they have a dedication to excellence and really a servant heart, and I appreciate that. And they're very thorough and excellent at what they do. Andrea Cooper Schmidt does an excellent job as well. And then other people that are here tonight would be Mike McKenzie and Carla Eman. And then from the unions on the administration, Tanya Strong, Scott Schiefling, Matt McCaw, Mary Fran Westler, Sean Stever, Mike Bowen, Angela Bell, and Dawn Hoyle. So I just wanted to take an opportunity and tell you that you have just a great group of people that work together, and I enjoy working with them. That's all.
Our final speaker is Ms. Patricia Shaw.
We have some emails. Can they bring them up to you? Is that a thing?
Yes.
I'm Patricia Shaw, and I've 5913 North Roxbury Lane, Peoria. And I've coached at Richwoods High School tennis since 1998, I think. But I'm here on behalf of the tennis teams and the coaches. We're here to ask you to please make a plan to address the much-needed repair of the tennis courts at Richwoods. Cracks have become crevices running through the playing surface on all the courts. A rusted net post snapped off, so that one of the six courts is unplayable. When will the next rusted net post go? The weeds that sprout up in the cracks throughout the courts are on display for thousands of cars driving by on university every day. We're concerned about the safety of our Richwoods players, but also of players from other schools and from the community. Other schools actually do not want to risk having one of their players injured by stepping in one of the cracks when they're on a dead run for a shot. The cracks are about the width of my foot, which is a size 10. So we're, we're basically not able to play home matches there anymore. No one wants to play there. I've included some pictures of our courts and the tennis, of our courts, and then the tennis facilities of area courts. These two in particular are Dunlap and Morton. It could have been pictures from Washington, Metamora, or any of our Big 12 opponents. But our students at Richwoods also deserve to play and compete on safe crack, crack-free courts. The Richwoods tennis programs have historically been among Peoria Public Schools' most successful sports teams, having qualified players for the state tournament every year for decades in what was, until the last three years, a single-class sport. That's quite an accomplishment. This past spring, 21 student athletes were on the boys' team, 12 were on the girls' team in the, in the fall. That's not an insignificant number of, of students for a varsity team. The majority of these students are participating in the IB program, taking AP courses, holding leadership roles in student council, yearbook, countless other organizations, and contributing to their community. These students look forward to representing Richwoods while playing and competing on our tennis teams. Chase Klaus, former Richwoods Student Council President, achieved first-team All-State designation his senior year, an outstanding achievement. I think Chase, then and now, and our student athletes, few of whom are here today, epitomize the standard of excellence that Richwoods and District 150 embrace and, and promote. In 2011, 2012, we ra, we fundraised for $38,000 for a short-term Band-Aid crack repair. I don't know, I don't have any information about prior district expenditures on the Richwoods courts, or when or how much, but the district did pay to paint, and, and did paint the rusty fences in 2012, I think. Anyway, a couple of years after our Band-Aid, it became evident that we needed to undertake a more comprehensive repair, but we have now been told that the courts are irreparable, and there is apparently no plan to even make a plan to fix the rapidly worsening, worsening conditions of the courts. I asked for names of some contractors to contact for estimates. I didn't get a response, so I contacted the company that repaired the ICC courts and recently resurfaced Dunlap High School. There are some just budget estimates that are based on pictures I sent them and crack measurements and stuff like that. To Justin Vaughn with McConnell &amp; Associates, he's, he said these are very rough estimates, but there are a couple of options there. Simple crack repair and resurfacing, $46,000, fabric, another 40 on top of that. There are people who have talked about moving the entire six-court complex, and they said the north end of the Richwoods Stadium, which the freshman baseball field is gone from there. But anyway, we've been told that repairing and replacing the courts has been under consideration for the past five years or so, but then other projects were pushed ahead of the courts and were funded instead. With improvements already made to the soccer field, the pool, the new freshman baseball field, and the scheduled track renovation, we're asking that you please make a plan for the Richwoods varsity tennis facility. Thank you.
Dr. Garrett, do you have any responses to audience participation?
Thank you, Vice President Shaw. Just wanted to say to Ms. Cruz, and Mr. Knapp, Mr. Ross, and Ms. Jackson, Karen, thank you for continuing to share your experiences, your wisdom. We'll continue to listen and reflect and make adjustments where we can. I know we do have an amazing district with amazing staff, and we're working every day, and we have some remarkable things happening every day, and I would like to hear more of those. And then, Richwoods, I know we, we've invested, we're investing hundreds of thousands of dollars. And Dave, you just happened to be here. Can you, sorry about that. Can you share with us, Dave is the director of Buildings and Grounds, so he does a lot of that work. This is, this is the first time hearing of this. So where were the tennis courts? Yes, please.
So we've started a plan for the track plan. It started with the stadium, that went into the high schools as well. We started out with Athletic Directors probably almost two years ago, and I'm pretty familiar. I've been the director of Buildings and Grounds, director since 2011. So I am aware of some of the issues you're talking about, and you're exactly right. There's been a, a plan in place or a talk about it, and the cans got kicked out of the road because of other projects. So yeah, that, that is true. However, if you see what the, where the direction we've had with Richwoods now with the track, and the track was another issue that's been ongoing as well. So we're resolving that. So we're just, we're obviously, we have HVAC that's happening, so there's all kinds of things at Richwoods that we're trying to do, which, which would put us at what's left is the track. I would be interested in your cost estimates that you have, because what I see is more extensive than that. A lot of, it's a lot of base that, on the, and the actual tennis courts, it's more extensive than the estimates, but.
He didn't, I mean, I sent him pictures and.
Gotcha. And I've investigated myself. I've actually had structural engineers or engineers investigating the cracks and the movement on it, and then you can determine what the base is, and you do cores, and then that would tell you what's going on under it. So we actually started some of that research as well, so.
He believes that the cracks shouldn't have been cut the way they were a long time.
Yep. So this is good. I'll, I'll tell you what, I mean, it's a first-class tennis team, and.
Correct.
They deserve a first-class court, so let's put our heads together.
Absolutely.
We'll, we'll pull in their athletic director and their principal, Mr. Elliott, Mr. Tyler.
And they have been huge advocates for it as well. I think, we think we get the track done, and then let's definitely have a conversation about tennis courts. It's a, I think it's more extensive than what, what the estimates you got. And I, and I get it, you're getting just based on pictures.
We're making progress.
Correct.
I mean, the, the, the track is impressive, tons of money, the pool was a lot of money, and so we're getting there. We're, we're getting there, I promise. Thanks, Dave.
Number one, the Parent Teacher Advisory, Advisory Committee on the Cell Phone Policy Update.
The Parent Teacher Advisory Committee is a committee, a board-level committee that meets once per month, and those members are listed in your, board members in your packet, members of that committee. And we have, we have parents, staff, and board members as part of that. Excuse me for going back and forth, because I have to go down here and then come back. So one of the reasons this particular committee exists is because the state of Illinois, some years back, said that many of the schools, public schools in Illinois did not have enough parent participation, participation from staff and parents altogether. So it's, it's a statute that we, that this committee was developed, it was state statute. And as a result, one of the reasons why it was developed was to address some discipline issues, both in schools and on buses. And to give you the history, when, when the committee first started, we looked at the discipline problems that were most apparent at that time. And out of that came new policies around discipline, and that's where the discipline policies that we currently have, they've been updated, but they are still in effect along with the administrative procedures that have been put together for those. So those policies came out of the first committee. Also, the, the current cell phone policy came out of the first committee, and that was early on, when it wasn't really a problem. So we've, since I've been a part of this committee, which I wasn't for a number of years, and they did some other things, but since I've been a part of it for this year, Mr. Wilson, Board Member Wilson and I, and the committee, which consists of Mr. Booth, Mr. Derek Booth, Beth Jensen, Tanya Fugliano, Shannon Marlin, DiMario Boone, William Cannon, April Jackson, Kim Thomas, Jesse McGowan, Nina Goojus, and Yolanda Wallace. This committee studied for probably, I don't know, four or five months on what we should address, since the whole issue of discipline is still a hot issue. And then we looked at the data that was provided by Ms. Marlin, on, on what could we do to attack one piece of what was happening as far as, as far as discipline was concerned, negative dis, negative behavior. So we reviewed the violations of the cell phone policy and recommended to the board solutions which would, would we feel will correct some of these violations. And again, it's based on the data that we had received. The, I have listed here the current policy, and also common misuses of the, of the cell phones, which is destruction, cheating, cyberbullying, illicit pictures, theft, inappropriate materials, texting, and video chatting. And I'm sure that's not all. Then the committee's finding, as I said, was that cell phone violation has caused the majority of, I would say, disruptions to the educational process at Peoria Public Schools. And one of the things that we wanted to, we looked at was what would work, what was working, whether there are pilots out there. And Glen Oak Community, Glen Oak Primary School had a, had a pilot project that they were doing, and they had, for their seventh and eighth grade classes, they had purchased some cell phone bags. And the way that works, the, one of the things that kids don't want to do is give up their cell phones. So with this process, they could maintain their cell phones in a locked bag, and at the end of the day, they just run the bag through a magnet to get their phones out. So they had their phones on their persons all day, which seemed to really help lower the infractions relating to cell phones, according to the data. Now I apologize for not having this in the system, but I think some staff might have been out a couple of days, and we didn't get a chance to get it. But I did pass out to you the information that was provided by Ms. Marlin on major electronic referrals at 1,531, minor electronic referrals at 1,172, for a total of about 2,703 infractions relating to cell phones. And I know that might say, sound minor, but it's actually more than that. We could not tell, break out how many were, started out to be something else, but it was related to the cell phone, so it's kind of hard to narrow all that down. So as close as we could get to it. The pilot that Glen Oak did, for their entire seventh and eighth grade, as you can see on the, on the list I handed out to you, decreased the number of, of infractions based on the fact that nobody in seventh and eighth grade could take their phones to class. And so we feel that that would, you know, that would be a good process to use for the rest of the school district to try to eliminate some of those infractions as relates to cell phones. The current policy pretty much says, "You can have your cell phone, but it must be off and out of sight," which is not working. And I don't know if it's working in any school completely, you know, as it relates to these, these infractions over the years, over the last two years. So the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee would like to recommend to the board, the proposed action is that the Board of Education accepts these recommendations as a solution to decrease the number of negative infractions in schools caused by improper use of cell phones by students. And that the Board asks administration to pursue funding to purchase an appropriate number of cell phone locked bags for the purpose of decreasing disruptions in school, thereby increasing learning time for students. And that the Board directs the Policy Committee to revise any existing, and any existing policy or practice to include new changes. And that the Board directs administration to develop administrative procedures that are aligned with the use of the cell phone bags and the revised policy. So these are our recommendations coming from the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee for, for tonight. Any questions from the Board? I can probably answer those better than just kind of going through these documents.
No question.
No questions? You have a question?
It's cost.
Okay, see, we don't, the cost of the bags is something that we want to research. We know how much that Glen Oak, I believe, paid for theirs. Anybody on committee, Mr. Booth, do you remember how much that was? Mr.?
I think it's like $31 per pouch.
Is it about $31 per pouch? We did have that information. Is it about thirty-one dollars per pouch? We did have that information. So, what, the way it works is it won't be, uh, the bags won't be, um, available for everyone that has an infraction. Uh, the administrative procedures will determine for each school, for, for all of our schools, how they will use those. You know, they'll be available for the principals to use as another, um, you know, as another process of, of eliminating some of those. Say, for instance, you may have, um, you know, your phone may be on and then you get a warning, and then you get a second warning, and a third time, maybe your phone has to go in a bag for two days or whatever. The procedures are developed by the administration. And I want to say that, that at a principals' meeting, uh, Mr. Booth met with principals and they were in favor of having this as an additional, um, you know, benefit to helping them solve some of the problems. So, the, the K through four, uh, t- uh, principals didn't, didn't think that they would need them. So, we're merely talking about middle and high schools. Yes, sir?
So, the committee recommendations, number one, excuse me, that the Board of Ed- uh, Education accepts these recommendations as a solution to decrease the number of negative infractions in schools caused by improper use. So, the recommendation, I was, I was looking for the actual recommendation, but the rec- the recommendation is to purchase pouches, develop administrative procedures for their use, right? Those are the recommendations?
The recommendation is that you accept the, the, uh, self, the, um, parent teacher advisory committee's recommendation. First of all, we accept the recommendation.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out what that recommendation is, though.
Is to accept our recommendations.
And what is that recommendation?
Okay.
I'm not trying to be difficult here, I just don't, I don't see where the recommendation is.
Okay, the recommendation basically overall is to, um, change the policy.
Okay.
And to, um, uh, look for money to purchase these bags.
Okay, so change, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
And to provide, uh, administrative policy as to how they would be used.
Okay, okay.
If it's not, if it's not written correctly, we can rewrite it.
Okay.
Item number five on the consent agenda, it, it bullets it out.
Okay.
I think he has that, that's what he was questioning.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to, I was going through the, the PowerPoint.
Okay.
And that's, that's where I was headed.
Yeah.
Uh, a, um, uh, an idea, uh, with that, oh my gosh, I can't believe how much, how many pages we have here. Ms. Ross, I'm doing what you were doing earlier.
Yes.
Scrolling, scrolling, scrolling.
Just kind of spread it out.
And that is, uh, would it be appropriate to direct council to take a look at what some of the legal parameters are of, because we're, we're doing a new intervention, and, and I know that it's being used now. Are there any legal issues that we need to take a look at?
I mean, my recommendation at this point would just be to look at it in the context of the Board Policy Committee. If we're talking about, you know, changing how this is addressed from a student discipline perspective.
Correct. Now, what Glen, what Glen Oak did was they, they included the parents, every parent, you know, whose child had a phone that was put into the bag, was, you know, signed off on that. I believe every parent, most, most of them did anyway, she said, the principal there. Unless the one else has some other information.
Additionally, Dr. B., um, I did talk to council also and, um, thinking along the same lines as you are. And they said, actually, we can really ban cell phones from schools. And so, they didn't really anticipate any, um, legal challenges with, with this strategy. And based on how it's written, to me, it would be for those who are chronic violators. So, it wouldn't be a school-wide implementation, everyone has to turn in that cell phone into a pouch or a bag, whatever it's called. So, being a high school principal, we, we had issues, just a few, that just wouldn't listen, and, um...
And as you know, we went through this discipline, uh, exercise, the two Saturdays, and that was one of the main things that came out of that.
The disparity.
And so, I, I, no, I do think it's a good idea. So, as I understand it, the recommendations are, um, to investigate pouches, to look at policy regarding pouches, to, to, so to put the, the, because the devil's in the details. So, to fine tune this thing so that, that we can do this across the board, the same way for everybody. Just as a matter of, of historic curiosity, um, Mr. Eric Thomas was doing it old school back in the day, um, and...
He was one of the people we, um, we brought to talk to us about.
And actually, I actually, I was over at, uh, 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 his building, uh, Notchville Center for Student Success, and I saw him do it. The interesting part about that is that at no time does any staff member touch the phone. There's no staff member DNA on that phone at all. It's, there's a, there's a plastic Ziploc bag. Student takes their phone, puts it in the bag, bag gets closed, bag goes put in the locked drawer. So, the, uh, I, I think it's, I, I think this looks like a great idea, and I think we need to get that granular with things like this so that we can, uh, implement this effectively.
Yeah, a slight difference is that that pouch will be with the kid.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, I understand that piece, which is, which is an improvement of the old school. Oh, yeah, oh, no, no.
He set that up as one of, one of the reasons why you could attend his school, because it was an alternative. And so, when we talked to different, um, you know, um, teachers and, and principals, you know, they, they feel that it is a, a problem, and as we visited schools, it was a problem. I mean, a lot of times, I don't even think the kids know they're not supposed to have their phones on.
So, now, look at, uh, at item five, and I agree with you, it is a bit confusing, item five, because it says these recommendations, but I think if you indent the bottom three bullet points, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so...
Basically, we wanted to go to the policy committee.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, and it becomes policy, and changing the policy.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments on, uh, on item number one? Okay, item number two, proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred. Are any questions for Mr. Willis? Mr. Walton?
I usually don't, but I have a couple for my good friend, Mr. Willis here. Three items in particular, there was a legal invoice, sixteen oh six-six to Kavanaugh and Scully for two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. There was a made legal notice from our friends from Hodges and Louiezy for forty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five. And then there was another notice from Elias McGuinness, Cool, and Cigetti. I think all three of these are law firms. My question is, how many total law firms do we pay, how many we have? I'd actually like, maybe at the next board meeting, if we could get an updated report on the total amount of legal expenses. I've already made a request to the superintendent, she's been kind enough to give me that. I have that from Hodges and Louiezy, except for, we don't have the last month then, of June. And I just wanted to make sure of the numbers we got. Is this made legal notice included in yours, or is this extra? I didn't know that, and I just need that clarified. But what I'd like to get, quite frankly, is through the end of June, what we've paid, how many law firms do we pay, what's the total amount of money we pay? And, uh, really a clarification, and probably Dr. Icke could help on that, was on Hodges and Louiezy.
Yeah, we'll get that for you. Um, what, what I sent to you and the Board, it's separate, it's just for...
Just, right.
So, different law firms have different assignments, so be happy to send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, request under the Freedom of Information Act, Dr. Parrot?
Yep, thank you, Vice President Shaw. Since our last board meeting on June tenth, we received three new requests. There was one pending, noted on June tenth. This request was filled. We have received two requests for this, uh, calendar year, and at a cost of seventeen hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. In the consent agenda, I will continue to read as normal. Consent agenda consists of the following. Item number one, gifts to the school district, uh, one thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. Year-to-date, one thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, human resources report. Item number five, parent teacher advisory committee cell phone policy update recommendations. Item number six, field trip approval, Richwoods High School, J R O T C, to Oswald, Pennsylvania. Item number seven, New Zella Pro online resource adoption for grades five through eight, social studies. Item number eight, equal opportunity schools. Item number nine, Renaissance Learning, Myon Reading Program, software renewal. Item number ten, approval of Panorama Social and Emotional Learning, screening tool platform, project management and training supports. Item number eleven, Lions Quest SCL Curriculum and Professional Development Training. Item number twelve, Go Solutions Medicaid Vendor. Item number thirteen, Methodist Medical Center of Illinois In-School Healthcare Services Agreement. Item number fourteen, Memorandum of Understanding is entered into by the Board of Education of City of Peoria, School District Number One Fifty, and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, I F T, A F T, A F L, C I O, Local Number Seven Eighty, to create an SCL pilot in support of Fine Arts Magnet Program at Roosevelt Magnet School. The M O U should be in effect from July fifteen, twenty nineteen, to July fifteen, twenty twenty. Item number fifteen, teacher recruitment incentives, sign-on bonus, candidate referral pay. And item number sixteen, help clinic, and that is the entirety of the consent agenda. Are there any items that Board members would like to pull for a separate vote? Mr. Walton?
Number eleven.
Any other items? Okay, I have a motion to accept items excluding number eleven items, uh, one through sixteen, excluding number eleven.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Please call the role.
Well, question.
Oh, discussion, sorry.
Discussion, yeah.
Ms. Ross?
I have, uh, I have a question on, uh, number eight.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now, I don't want to pull it, I just have a question.
Okay, okay.
Clarification on, uh, equal opportunity schools. I realize this is, says it's coming out Title I funding, but can, can somebody explain to me what, uh, what exactly we're looking for in, in doing this? This is a survey of students, it looks like, student outreach profiles and analysis. I mean, what do, why do we need this?
Thank you, great question. So, we've had this collaboration for what, three years now? Um, when I first started, and it actually was funded initially by Caterpillar, um, support. And what this, um, collaboration with Equal Opportunity does is we identify high achieving, underrepresented minority students who are, are not aware of AP classes, don't believe they belong in those classes. And so, individuals actually identify them, get recommendations, there's a process. I think we've, we've given the Board a couple of presentations, um, in terms of how many kids we found that were eligible and were encouraged to try those classes and take those classes. And so, this provides support for those students, and actually, the teachers who are teaching the classes. And there's a collaboration with Springfield. So, um, we've narrowed it down because we've gotten, we've accomplished a lot. Um, as I said, we've, we've gotten over two hundred kids to encourage them to challenge themselves by, um, again, enrolling in those challenging courses. And so, it's also supports for them, supports for the teachers, and...
That's within the forty-six-five?
That's, that's...
The support, because this isn't a separate person, you're saying, that's, that's, uh, that's doing the surveys? It's a, it's a person that's doing it, or is it just some of our teachers?
We're working with the counselors, and the principal have a big role in that. And then also, someone from Tracy was, Dr. Tracy was, what was Tracy's last name?
Conrad.
Conrad was, uh, does anybody want to, Carly, you want to add to that?
Um, this is just, yeah, the third year of getting support at all three high schools for the AP area. And then the idea is that to be able to do it on our own after this year.
Yeah, somewhere in my, back of my mind, I think we were supposed to be doing it on our own, but I didn't know how many years.
We thought we needed one more year of additional support because we have a new person that got in that area. And they, the, the schools felt the same, that one more year and then we would be able to forward that one year.
So, I know total, we've, we've gotten about two hundred, but...
Did she want to say something?
Hi, good evening. I want to add that the research still shows that, um, students are underrepresented in these types of courses. And the AP classes are one of the number one things that colleges look at in order to accept students.
Yeah.
And then, too, that students do better when they have this love for it at the high school, so...
Yeah, it's really powerful, and their persistence, even if they take, they're enrolled in the AP and they, they're, they're exposed to it, they may not do well on the test, you know, there's a test at the end, if you do well, you get credit for it. But the fact that they've been exposed to this higher level rigor, um, there's powerful research that talks about their success, um, in college, persisting and graduating versus students who have not been exposed to that rigor. So, um...
Well, I'm, you know, I'm in support of it, but I was just saying, we don't really need research to know that this group is underrepresented, has been for a while.
And they have a strategy to help us do it.
Yeah.
And without them, we would not have gotten over two hundred kids, if not more, and, um...
Can we track them to see where they are now?
Yep. And we actually even changed the high school schedule. Last year, we experimented with that by providing an extra period, an AP period for those kids, so that they could get supports. So, it's actually really beautiful work that's going on, and we believe we have a structure in place with Ms. Hassan replacing Mr. Welch, um, and coming in new, and, um, staff was still...
Because I know we've talked over the years about, you know, one of the reasons why kids couldn't get into those AP classes is because it wasn't enough students at one, at a particular school. And so, uh, then we talked about, uh, you know, all kinds of ways to getting them. So, why should a student, even a student said, why should I suffer? Because it's not enough students to have a whole class. And so, you know, it's, as long as we are dealing with, uh, transportation and accessing that.
Yep, it's still interesting. I mean, some people will still think it, some kids don't belong in certain classes. So, all of these things were exposed, and we're working through them. Thanks for asking.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda excluding item number eleven? Please call the role.
Dr. Davidson, Abbyless?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye. Have a motion to accept item eleven.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Mr. Walton?
Yeah, um, actually, I probably could have done what Mrs. Ross did. I just had some questions about this, and I, and I, if I could be so bold as that, Derek Booth, that maybe explained this. I, I've read what it says. I still don't know what actually the Lions Quest does, and what are you going to ask about this? You've got a hundred sixty-two teachers involved, looks like forty-five hundred students, and journals. What exactly does Quest do, and how does that fit into your program?
So, Lions Quest is the curriculum, so it provides, um, curriculum books to teach, um, SCL instructions. The teachers will have a teacher's manual that will, uh, guide them on teaching different social, emotional learning skills.
Okay.
The journal is a tool that the students will have, um, to do different lessons and do different activities within the social, emotional learning. With Lions Quest, in addition to offering the materials, they also are the individuals that will come down to do the trainings and train all of the teachers. Uh, before just handing them the curriculum for them to teach, they teach them, um, starters, what is the basic, what is SCL, social, emotional learning, um, and how to embed this curriculum, not just as a standalone period to teach those social, emotional competencies, but also how to embed this curriculum in everything that a educator does, in their math class, social studies class, N P E, throughout the culture of their classroom. So, they, um, these are intentional trainings to train staff in all of those areas. So, uh, Lions Quest also provides that support. They also provide, um, a, a, a large grant amount of dollars to match, uh, the funds to go, um, to support this program so that a curriculum school doesn't bear the total burden of the cost of the program. to go, um, to support this program, so that the curriculum school doesn't bear the total burden of the cost of the program.
Um, what has been the, the record of this? Has it been other schools that have used this? Has it been successful in other places?
So we started pursuing, moving into Lions Quest, um, at the end of the school year in two thousand seventeen, after request of, um, the treatment therapeutic staff and teachers. They researched, um, on a different curriculum, Lions Quest, I mean, they wanted a different social-emotional curriculum. Um, you may not remember, several years ago, Renee Andrews presented to the board on a therapeutic program, and she, um, was looking for a curriculum, and her staff before curriculum also provided a pre- and post-test to, to measure, um, the benefit of the, the materials that the students were receiving. Lions Quest provides that. So they researched, they made recommendation, um, if they, and asked if they could pilot Lions Quest for, for a year. Um, and so that was, uh, last year in addition. Um, at the same time, the high schools, Man U of Peoria High, were bringing back their advisory period. And one of the things they wanted to implement and incorporate in their advisories was a social-emotional learning, uh, day. And so they recommended to also use, um, Lions Quest as their curriculum. After positive feedback about mid-year, uh, we also, uh, trained all of our gates room supervisors and, uh, with, and in-school suspension supervisors to provide some structures to our in-school suspension classrooms. All of these, uh, pilot areas, treatment therapeutic are two high schools, our in-school suspension had overwhelming feedback. And because of that, many of our other school buildings and staff were also interested in implementing Lions Quest. In addition, the, the, the social-emotional learning committee, uh, toward, uh, during second semester, sent out a, um, a, a survey to all of the teachers, uh, in the district. And, uh, the top, two of the top five responses in the survey was a request to have a district-wide social-emotional learning curriculum, um, where, that spoke the same language, uh, with our high mobility rates, uh, but then, and also to have social-emotional learning training for teachers. So it, um, it didn't, the, the, the request for the curriculum didn't happen because of survey, but it happened simultaneously, um, that the SCL committee voted unanimously, unanimously, moved forward with Lions Quest because it did check two of those boxes, um, of the top five items that, um, according to our teachers' survey, would address, um, areas of, uh, need that they shared as well.
Okay. Um, not only do I like this program, I like how you got here. Um, I do remember Renee, a couple of years ago, and I was in her school when we did the Saturday breakouts and stuff with it, so I knew that, but I didn't know the details till you presented this. I really appreciate the kind of rigor that you did, and got feedback from actually the classroom stuff with it. So, that was the only question I have, it wasn't opposed to, and I just need a clarification of what it was. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say something, um, I should have said it earlier, but, Mr. Walker, I'll just piggyback on your question for Lions Quest. Um, I, I, I would like us to also, um, as educators and as leaders and, um, individuals who are sort of movers and shakers, to make of a city, and even of a city leaders. We heard, you know, there's a theme about, a theme we heard, I heard, discipline and behaviors. And, Mr. Walker, that's one strategy to connect, right? But the other thing that I've been thinking of, and I've been reflecting on, and, um, you know, as, as it relates to taking control of the narrative of our kids, I have been thinking about this quote, and I just wanted to share it with every, everyone. We don't really have to talk about it, but, and it has to do with, and this is where we're heading as a district. And in order to be exemplary as a district, if we do this, we will do very well, not only as a district, but as a city. We have to focus less on fixing children's behaviors, and more on serving them in different ways. Just think about that. Right? Less on, because that's what I heard a lot, less on the behaviors and fixing. All right, remember when you get married, people say, don't try to change the person. Right? But less on the behaviors, and more on finding, especially for today's youth, finding innovative and different ways to serve them and to reach them. If we're able to do that as a district and as a city, we will excel. Thank you. Dr. Bob and I are suffering from a cold, so I'm sorry about my voice.
Any additional discussion on...
No, I didn't get it.
Item number eleven. All right, please call a roll.
Doctor Davidson, Abilis?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Liberation agenda, item number seventeen, consideration of resolution providing for the amendment of, to the Harrison School Project lease agreement with the Public School Commission of Peoria. Have a motion to accept item number seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion on item number seventeen. Mr. Willis, would you like to give a, a description of item number seventeen? And I believe seventeen and eighteen are similar, so...
Uh, items seventeen and eighteen are, uh, formal resolutions that, uh, we as a, a Peoria Public Schools, we need to adopt in order for the refinancing of P B C bonds to occur. Uh, we basically, P B C basically, uh, is legally connected to the bonds, and we basically make, uh, payments of those bonds, uh, lease payments. This language basically says, if you can change the lease payment, it gives them the flexibility to refinance. So, that's, that's why the resolutions kind of read as they do. It's all toward a, a refinancing of P B C bonds.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other discussion?
I would just, um, would just like to ask a question. Maybe I know this already. Who do we have, um, representing us? Who did we get to represent us on P B C? It has been, uh, Representative, uh...
Leach.
Leach for a number of years. It's, who, who do we have now that's representing us?
I'm not sure.
Is it still Leach? It's still, it's still...
Still Leach?
It's still Leach.
It's still Leach, I know.
Yeah, it's still Leach.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I know I used to be on, uh, working with the P B C when we, we, when we got these new schools.
Yes, he's still there.
All right. You know, is, any other discussion on item number seventeen? Please call a roll.
Doctor Davidson, Abilis?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to, to adopt item number, to accept item number seven, or number eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on eighteen? Please call a roll.
Second.
Oh, all right.
Mr. Ross.
Oh, Mr. Ross, okay.
Thank you. Doctor Davidson, Abilis?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Presentations and suggestions by board mem, board members. Do any board members have comments? Doctor Davidson, Abilis?
Dr. Karat, my wife indeed has changed me a great deal. Because I'd be in jail or dead if I'd married her.
She told me.
She tells everybody. So sometime, and pardon me, I have a, a cough drop that will allow me to keep from coughing all the way through this. Um, sometime in the nineteen eighties, John Lennon wrote a song for his son, Sean. And if you haven't heard it, you should listen to it. And if you have heard it, you should listen to it again. Now, in it, Lennon famously quotes, "Life is what happens to you while you're busy making other plans." Well, life has happened to me, and as a result, I'm resigning my position as a school board member for Peoria Public Schools effective the end of this meeting. I did not arrive at this decision lightly, it's taken several months. As some of you may know, last spring, Bradley University announced the merger of two departments in the College of Education and Health Sciences. Those would be Teacher Education and Leadership in Education, Nonprofits and Counseling. The resulting department, now Education, Counseling and Leadership, is one of the largest academic units on campus. As this merger unfolded, I was offered and accepted a leadership position as interim counseling coordinator, which in the new department will become the Assistant Director of Graduate Programs. It's become apparent to me that my Bradley responsibilities are greatly increasing in number and complexity, so much so, that it is untenable for me to sustain my responsibilities to both Bradley University and Peoria Public Schools, while at the same time managing my first priority, my family. So as a result, I must step down from the board. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve our community and the children, staff, and families of Peoria Public Schools. I also thank and offer my appreciation to all of my colleagues sitting around this horseshoe, most especially Daphne, whose professional care and attention to detail rescued me time and again. At this moment, I was going to add a more colloquial comment having to do with slings in certain parts of the anatomy, but I think I can avoid that. I have spoken with Dr. Daimon Karat, and we will continue to build and strengthen the relationships with Peoria Public Schools that led me to this position to begin with. Thank you all. Have a good rest of the summer.
Mr. Walker?
I have a point of parliamentary procedure. Can we vote to not accept this resignation?
There is. Uh, I wouldn't entertain a motion, but we're, we're actually beyond the action items, but...
No, I just want to thank, this was a surprise to hear this from Dr. Bob. Dr. Bob and I both came on board at the same time, and we have been cohorts in crime at times. Um, I think the record will show through Daphne that there were a number of five to two votes, and the other half of the two was sitting there with Dr. Bob. Um, you've done a wonderful job on this board. Uh, you provided insight, and you've had some questions that at times, I'm sure some of the people in the administration weren't comfortable with, but it wasn't anything personal. We were just trying to get some more data and information about what was good for the district. And at times, you had the depth of knowledge of that, that was beyond, I think, anybody else on the horseshoe. And I just want to know, I greatly appreciate that. And I know from, first time we met at the coffee shop, that your concerns are same as mine. We do want to do what's best for this district. And, uh, you've been there, and I just really appreciate working with you. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
And I just want to congratulate you on the move, and, uh, I have definitely enjoyed working with you. We've, we've clashed over the years, and, uh, but I've never doubted that you had the best interest of the, of the families of the school district in mind. So we may have disagreed, but I, I never doubted your, uh, your intentions.
I just want to say, I've enjoyed working with you, and I've enjoyed the conflict and, and all the, all the back and forth that we've had, because I learned from those, you know, and, um, happy to see you make that move at Bradley. They keep losing a lot of people, so I'm glad to see you on there. That's my alma mater, too.
Any other comments?
Just congratulations to Dr. Bob. I know we'll be working together in his new capacity at Bradley, and, um, we go way back. I had all of his kids at Whittier, and, um, known him for a long, long time, the entire family. And I know it's a good investment for Bradley. Um, he's one of the few with that community, gets out of, from the hilltop, and he's out and about in the schools and the community. So, looking forward to continuing to work with you in that new capacity.
Well, there is, despite what some will tell you, there is not a moat around Bradley University. And if they ever decide to build one, I'm going to be pulled, put the drawbridge in, and just do the way you get finished that.
And last item, reports from board committees. I've had nothing for a policy committee. We're going to seat a new policy committee soon. Any other committees?
That was our final report.
All right, with nothing from board committees, we are adjourned.